We understand that we're going to go in toward the front and try to make this. I was trying.
Father in heaven, we thank you for all that you do for us. We thank you for being able to represent this county, Lord. We pray that you guide us and give us courage and strength to do what is right in your sight. Give us the knowledge, like I said, of the right decisions, Lord, that are approved by you, Lord, forgivable with failure, Lord. We pray for those that are bereaved, those lost loved ones, that you might come to their comfort and come to give them comfort and all that they need, Lord. But give us the word of failure on these things as in that name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Good shot.
Yes, sir.
We have a virtual asphalt bid?
Yes, sir. I reviewed the bids, submitted y'all a letter. I recommend that we award the bid to the only bidder, which is S.D. Bunn Construction Company Incorporated. Bid bond was in place, and I would make that recommendation to the commission.
Okay, I motion, do we accept the S.D. Bunn bid? It's only bid and all things are in proper order. Have a motion of that, Scott?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. I see that the governor has gone fifth as a holiday also for the state. Does it request approval of the question that the county recognizes that also?
I've got a question. Scott can probably answer. Scott, would this be just for this year or?
Would it just do for this?
Just for this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I.
That's just because I think it's on a Friday.
Yeah.
The fourth is on Thursday.
I make that motion.
I've got a motion.
I'll second.
A second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Well, my contract.
Scott, I've read over all of that. I guess might be a two. To my knowledge, everything looked good. What about you?
I'm good if you're good.
I mean, far as the money, but I'm talking about all the other, everything, all the insurance and everything.
That's good. Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, I make a motion. We accept the contract. It's in my district.
Okay.
So, what is it, I'm saying, I'm going to contract?
Lease on some property.
I'll second this motion.
I'll second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Next item is the request of reallocation of gasoline tax money.
How are y'all proposing that this is reallocated?
I'll let Scott add that here.
Sorry, Commissioner, I have to some. The request is to. Make sure I have it right. To reallocate the gas revenues that is currently divided equally among each of the districts to twenty-two percent District One, Two, and Three, and seventeen percent to Four and Five. And my understanding is that's the manner in which it was prior to two thousand and one.
I thought state law that it had to be divided according to population?
I don't think there's anything in state law that dictates how it's divided once it gets into the commission standpoint. I think it's up to y'all.
Was that what mandate, what dictate this, how this is divided, what you just said? Is this somebody's desire it being divided this way?
Yes, I mean, it would be coming from one of the districts.
What?
It would be coming from one of the districts. Yes, sir.
Me, I'm the one that character to Scott and told him to change it back like it was before it was changed.
So, in other words, you're requesting part of the districts?
I'm requesting.
To three, four, and five money?
I'm requesting to put it back just like it was when District Three and Four took the money from.
What about before that time?
The other time, it was like that for.
Oh, it was like, it was changed in the sixties.
Well, I'm asking for a big change back just like it was when y'all changed it from, took it from Bobby Boyk and Elvis Cockton.
What justifies this?
The road mileage.
Who come up with the road mileage?
Survey, census, whatever.
When though?
I'm sorry?
When would the road survey, rode out, and the mileage and all come up with? The question I've got was it before Hamilton Annex, everything from Mississippi Line to Hackenberg to Bear Creek to Duane? Are the city streets taken out of it?
You know, for the most part, I think, yes. Curtis had looked at it. I'm gonna say he probably looked at it four or five years ago. So, there could be some minor changes that can be incorporated into that total.
Do these, are they all over districts?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Pretty much looked at all of them, and at that time, I think, one of the commissioners that wanted to look at, so we.
Does the survey go all the way in the city or just city limits?
It represents county maintained roads, the ones that the county is responsible for. It does not include the city or state highways.
Well, what about that law in ninety-five that really increases the county's, even up the law that's incorporated after by the city act ninety-five?
That's right. It would have included those.
Well, why if it's, why would it include them if they were?
Because the survey was done after the ninety-five.
Sure.
The survey was done after ninety-five, so anything that was, that the county.
Has it done after last, in the last incorporation of any of the streets?
There could be some minor differences in the last five years, if the cities incorporated some areas in the last five years. That probably would not be reflected in that total.
I don't think there's a hundred and fifty mile discrepancy in these roads. I've got eighty mile gravel. You've got fourteen. Yeah, but let me tell you, let me make one statement. And you've got a hundred. Let me make one statement. You justify that. Did y'all know what road mileage and what this job consists of when you were running for? I've been here for twenty-something year. I see what damage it done when this money was took away from One, Two, and Three. I see the damage that was done. It shouldn't never been took away. It was done for political reasons. Do you see the damage it's gonna do to mine Bob's district when it's took away? I tell you what, you take a hundred or something miles of, I give you a hundred something mileage, and say you keep it up. You've got new equipment. I'm working on junk. Hey, that's not, it's not my fault. When you talk to two hundred, and that's not your fault the money was changed. I'm not saying it was your fault it was changed. You had nothing to do with that.
How much work do you?
I showed Mr. Bob, and I laid that down seven, six or seven months ago on that mileage. And I asked Bob if he remembers. I said, we need to talk about this and do something about it. And I got shunned off like it was all his population, this, this, and that. But after you sit down and study it, I've got a copy here, if anybody wants to look at it again, that tells the miles. And I can read them off if you want.
I don't got a copy of it that was given to me, but who knows if that's the right miles?
Oh, I take our engineers' words and stuff that it was and our lawyers. But the thing is.
The way, I would personally, myself, if we're gonna go by mileage, I want to ride with the engineer or whoever measures the roads and measure every each of it.
Well, you're not gonna wake up for a hundred and fifty miles and two hundred.
I'm not saying that I will.
But. Let me talk, and then, or you go ahead.
I'm not saying that it will, but I want to know exactly what it is.
Okay, I got you.
And the next question I got is anybody down to study on how much money it's gonna take away from him, Bob?
It's not gonna take as much as you think it's going to.
Well, if it's not gonna take that much, it's gonna help you.
It's not gonna help you that much.
Yeah, it'll help on payroll and fuel where I'm running two districts compared to his one. I've got two hundred and fifty-four miles, and that's to work, run one district. You got a hundred and twenty-one. That's double. I'm running two districts on the same amount of money that you're getting to run one. Come look at my equipment and go look at your equipment, and figure out the difference in how you're saying how's it gonna affect you. It shouldn't affect you much. You should run like they're running before, at the equipment that they've got. And Bob, I've got a hundred and something miles more than Bob. All I'm doing is trying to take care of District One and watch the best for the rest of the county. And I've got double the miles. I'm running two districts with four to five hands where y'all running the same district with less, half less miles, and it's harder to operate. If you do my payroll, go back from January, my payroll is double to what y'all charge. Well, y'all say whatever. But I've gotta have those men to see out of this mileage. Bob knows this. This is not new.
I'm sitting here looking at the financial statement from the other month. You've got two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in the bank, and I've got sixty-six thousand.
Why is that? I mean, why is that?
Well.
I don't know why you've got quarter of a million dollars.
If you go look at her equipment, you'll tell why, Tim.
He just bought an eighty-seven thousand dollar bushwacker. He's gonna buy a bushwacker a hundred and forty thousand. It's gonna come in the end. I had to buy a grader out of mine.
I've got a hundred and forty come off mine, so I put that down there with it. But go look at mine. I'll have one piece, one new piece of equipment, and everything else I got is one year old.
The next question I've got, this would be, I guess, for Mike to answer. Over the last five years, that's what y'all rating this on or whatever? How many bridges have been built in District Four and Five, and how many's been built in District One and Two? How many roads have been asphalted in those districts, and how many's been done in mine and Bob's?
I would need to research that information.
But there's not been a bridge built in District Four, I can tell you.
A lot of the bridges have been built in District.
Because we got more roads, we got more mileage, we got more gravel, we got more pavement, we got more stuff to maintain and keep up with, we got more bush hogging. It's all falls on more mileage. We gotta keep them up because it's county road, regardless of anybody who owns them or not.
And, Tim, to answer your question about the distribution, this money does come into the county. A quarter, a twenty-five percent is equally divided among the counties, and then thirty percent of the seven cent money is divided based on population. That's how it goes.
So, what all boiled down here, if I can get enough political clout to change one of you's votes, we can change it back next week.
You done that fifteen or eighteen year ago when that was a political move, what happened. It was done, but no, nothing else but political. It was done.
Well, it's always political as they.
And I can't help the last bunch wasn't changing or wanting to change. I don't know why. But it shouldn't never been changed, to start with.
That's the thing. It shouldn't have been changed according to the mileage. And this has nothing to do political with nobody. I'm not asking nobody how vote. I'm knowing.
If y'all could come up with a way to divide these miles equally, and you taking, y'all taking some of the work, and we split the money back. It's that simple? That'll work. That's fine, mate. Find a way to do it, huh?
You gotta find a way to do it.
When you gotta take in all the miles we got working with? Well, you got to go back, you've got to start to do this, and Scott may, you've got to start with the census with your population before you start dividing the miles, right, Scott?
That's how we get the money, is based off of the population.
Population, whether it's got one house on it or ten, you still gotta maintain it as a county revenue.
I understand.
Bob knows this. This is not new to Bob. This's been going on for sixteen, eighteen years, trying to get it changed back. And I've worked on it for six months, and with the mileage and stuff, I mean, it's hard to do, very hard.
How much work do y'all do inside city limits?
I don't do very any. The city's got their own crew. He just told you these road mileage is in the county. They're not consistent of city.
I've got Duane, Duane, Briar, and Quinn.
And they got their own street departments.
They don't have a street department.
They take care of their own.
There's never been a load of gravel haul by a city in my district in twenty-seven years that I didn't haul. Not one load, because they don't have a gravel truck.
How'd you make it before y'all changed this? I'm sure if you want to find out from Bobby and Elvis, they wasn't happy about this neither when it was took from me. And you know that. And you know it wasn't right when y'all changed it.
I didn't change it the first time.
I know who changed it. I know who voted on it. It was changed on a three-two vote, and I can tell you who brought it up and who done all of it. I've done my research on this, and two hundred and fifty-four miles compared to a hundred and twenty-one. There it is. Anybody wants, that's double.
Four towns.
I'm running, I'm running one district, I'm running one, I'm running two districts compared to one, and I can't operate. And there's people in here. Kevin's sitting there. Does it cost more money to operate more miles? I mean, that's a simple question. Anybody can answer that.
So, how much are you gonna profit by taking my money?
We're gonna profit about twelve, fifteen hundred dollars a month more to help on payroll and this and that.
And we're not taking your money. If that's the case, you took One, Two, and Three for a fifteen, eighteen year now. We're not taking nobody's money.
But you go back to time the commission started, you taking fifteen, eighteen year out of since nineteen thirty. It's been way longer the other way than it is this way.
Well, you go back. Scott said thirty percent was population, so what you're telling me is people in Winfield, Briar, Duane, Bay Ridge, Amfiteague, not worth as much people as.
No.
As much per person as y'all. I'm not saying nobody's working. I didn't know what we're doing.
This has nothing to do with population. I've read the census on it. I went through it. This change in the district has nothing to do with the gasoline tax on the district.
I still get the same amount of money to patch, and I break roads on it. You get the same amount, the less roads as we do. That doesn't change.
You can holla population. Population, I went back and checked all the voting polls, and District One had three hundred more votes than any district that I'm talking about. And if you want your people to come out and say, well, they take it from, well, those people, I've got three hundred people in District One who voted more than District Four and Five in both.
It was District Three, the third largest. Now, we're done together. That you're the biggest, you're second, and they's third?
That's right.
And District Three, larger than District Five? Twenty mile difference?
It's a vote. It either votes up or down. I said it's a vote, in or out, whatever. It's been laid on the table. I make a motion. I'll make a motion until it's tabled, until we have time to research it, Father.
Do I have a second on the table of it too?
Yeah, I made a motion pass it.
Do I have a second on the table, the later date? Do I have a second on the change in the formula of the gas tax?
I'll make a second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
All say, all same say.
Opposed.
I'll say.
I will make this statement. I've done talked to a lawyer, and we will be going to court. Go to court all you want. We could have went to court first time.
I had drew.
We have what, pay scale for the district? What's this? System? Yes, ma'am?
I need clarification on the motion.
Ma'am?
I need clarification on the motion, on the motion that was just made. Is that to go back to the twenty-two, 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 and seventeen? Or is that to go based off of the actual percentage of mileage for each district?
You need to talk to the lawyer.
Fellas, go back, broke to the first time, because if you actually do that, if you want to go by mileage, I'll tell you this. If you want to go to mileage, I'm asking for twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-two. We've got that approved. And I'm going seventeen and seventeen. The original plan was twenty-two point one oh five, twenty-two one oh five, twenty-two one oh five, sixteen eighty-four. So, really, you're getting a little bit more than you was on the original to break it to an even number. But if you want to go to mileage, it put District One at twenty-eight percent, twenty-seven to twenty-eight percent, District Two at twenty-four, District Three in the twenties, District Four or Five, one of the two, down to about fourteen percent or thirteen if you want to go by strictly mileage. So, you don't want to do that. You want to do it, and I'm not asking to do that, and I'm not asking to redo nothing. All I want is put back like it was to begin with, before it was changed. And we know the reason it was changed, and we've done voted on it, so it's passed. But answer your question, Brooke, is to go back to.
To the nineteen sixty-seven.
To twenty-two, 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 seventeen, seventeen. Because if you go the other way on based on mileage, you're gonna get in worse shape than you are. You're gonna go, I'm gonna go from twenty-two to twenty-seven or twenty-eight. I've done done the numbers on that. And you're gonna, and one that's got the less mileage is gonna go to about twelve to fourteen percent. It's done equally on fire.
What's the next item that we broke about?
Pay, Scott, huh?
Ma'am?
Scott, huh?
Scott?
Pay scale?
Yeah.
Per discussion we had several weeks back about.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry. Per discussion we had several weeks back about pay scale for the district. Do y'all have this? Do y'all have a copy of it? We talked about.
We ain't seen nothing, as usual.
Johnson up something that, we broke it down with the unskilled labor, part-time kind of truck driver with the Class B CDL, Class A CDL, operators, supervisors, and there's just ideas. Go and look at those.
Does this pay scale include all county employees?
This would just be basically your district.
Your basic what?
Your district employees within your districts. It does not consider your office personnel or your two-way personnel.
Well, what happens if some of those pay bill that used to, when one got a raise, all got raised?
Right. This is just for those particular categories, and it's not necessarily given a raise. It's just trying to establish a pay scale. For instance, if somebody got put into something, I don't know that we could cut their pay just because we're doing it, but it's just trying to adopt.
Where would his employees be under this pay scale?
No, I believe they would not be.
What about Kevin's?
No, sir. They would not. I don't think any of them would fall into that category, those categories.
Well, y'all know how I feel about it. If everybody don't get a raise, nobody gets a raise the way I feel about it. It's not right for me to give somebody a raise, or Kenneth and Kevin not be able to give his men a raise, and so forth, the ladies in the courthouse. I mean, to me, it's just not right. That's.
Well, I'll say from my part of it on the pay scale, I think everybody's job is different skill and different levels. You can't base Kevin's deputies what they do, and I appreciate what they do, but I can't base his pay and his pay on what my operators does and my truck drivers. It's all a different story, same way as the ladies working in the courthouse or whatever. It's a different pay level. It's a different skill that you do, and that's something. This is just for each district. And to my knowledge, if this is accepted, you still have to bring before the board. If Bob was to give his a raise, he'd have to bring it before the board, if I understand right, and the board has to approve it. This is just a skill to put, and it's got on here. It's got part-time laborers, it's got truck driver Class Ones, it's got truck driver Class Twos, it's got normal operators, and then it's got supervisors, which would be your former. And I just think we need a skill that we can do that all along, and the other ones, if they want to follow suit, they can write their own up at how they want their pay scale instead. And this pay scale goes along with every job in Marion County, if you look at it and go over closely to whatever job is paid in. And this will give our hands more incentive. The harder they work, the better off they are, and they can earn more money, if the districts can afford it.
Yeah, we just got our money cut, so I mean, how we got them?
You didn't get enough cut to hurt on your pay scale. You're paying two hands.
Yeah, because I can't afford no more.
Where's your money going if you can't afford two more of the equipment you've got down there in fifty miles to tend to?
I know when I took this job, what money I had to operate on. That'd be the same way, last month, we got fifteen thousand five hundred and something dollars to operate on. That'd be, if I made fifteen thousand dollars and I spent twenty thousand dollars every month, you know you're going in the whole plane in the world, and you do it. You've got to operate with what you've got to operate from.
Okay, District One, from January to May, I paid out seventy-four thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars.
How many employees do you have?
I have three full-time and one part-time.
I've got two full-time and one that has worked.
Well, you don't.
Maybe a month part-time this year.
If I didn't have the fifty miles to see either, I wouldn't need four hands. I need five or six. What I'm saying, Tim, you're talking about the money to operate, and you brought this up. I didn't. I paid out seventy-four thousand dollars in the last five months. You paid out thirty-seven dollars. I just now finished my bush hogging. How long does it take you to bush hog?
If I run three tractors, three, uh, two weeks.
Okay.
That's one.
You've been running three months.
If I bush hog all the way back, it takes me a month running three tractors. We're talking about this.
Yeah, let's talk about scale. We done done that. I ain't, I'm not.
And District Four hands make more than any other districts make, so you cannot drop about.
No, no, wait a minute. Now, you brought this up.
They make sixteen something hours.
Sixteen oh six. You're paying, you're paying two hands, foreman's pay, and you don't have a foreman. Now, I need help. Am I paying more than you are?
I'll tell you why. Because the foreman that we had was never, he was never told he was our foreman, and I cannot drop his pay.
You hired another foreman, and he won't take it, so you're paying two.
If you let me explain.
Okay, let's.
I'll explain it.
Now, Bob, I want to hear this. I'm coming. I want to hear this, how his math works differently.
Who's these, who figures with these, Scott, gave these? Yours?
We just worked off of what the county paid.
We.
Me and I talked to Mike about what they pay, and I looked at some other areas and pulled out the numbers.
Well, once again, this is gonna come down to all the talk we gonna do here and all the bickering back and forth, which is not gonna be good when we need to come down to agree on a jailhouse.
I want to make.
And wait, it's gonna come down to a vote, three to two vote, so all the talk is we gonna do here is not gonna do anything to drive a wedge between the.
I just want, I want to ask one question, Bob. Keith or Kenneth won, Keith did, I think, said that giving these hands a raise is gonna give, I understand that it's gonna give them, you know, they want to do more. What kind, what kind of morale is it gonna do for the people in the courthouse, the deputies, the jailers and all? Well, they got a raise, and we ain't worth the raise. We can't afford to give everybody a raise.
General fund.
Are you done? The general fund is, we can't afford it.
Are you done?
I got.
Yeah, I'm done.
On, to do this by district, is this ethically, are we committing a violation by doing this?
It's just setting for the pay scale for those particular employees that do those jobs. It's trying to get some kind of uniformity to that. Which that's, that's one of the biggest issues we have, is uniformity, obviously, throughout the county and the district. But that's a consideration, what you're saying, is a consideration, what, Tim, is that's something for y'all to consider.
So, this ain't, if we vote on this, this is vote to consider it?
No, it's, no, it's something for y'all to consider prior voting on it.
But each employee has to be voted on separately.
That's right. Like, even if you adopt a pay scale, if, say, John, an employee, you want to move him up to step three, that's got to be voted on.
Kevin, how's your hands gonna feel about this?
Well, that's one reason I'm here, to fight for my hands. You know, I'm working on a plan within my budget. We usually, Bob knows, he's been here, we usually talk about our budgets. End of July, I'm work on it in August, and try to sit down and prove it in September. Nobody's gonna be happy. I mean, I ain't gonna lie to you. And I understand what you're trying to do. I get that. Within my own department, we, you know, I have, I probably have more employees than anybody in the whole county system. I understand that. I've got over thirty employees. And they're broken down like you're trying to do as far as leadership roles. You got, I've got my captains, I got lieutenants, I got sergeants, and I got road deputies. But I'm gonna fight for my people, guys. I got jailers and. I got jailers and dispatchers making fourteen oh six an hour, which I think is ridiculous, I really do. They're down there protecting. A hundred and seventy-two people in jail this week. That's what they make, fourteen oh six, they had a raise. My deputies are the lowest paid now between Hamilton and Winfield, they ought to be the highest paid as far as what they make, they're below everybody. Um, I know your hands are below Hamilton's hands at one time, they got a raise, and that, you can't keep people, I understand that. What I'm trying to say is, Tim, to answer your question, I'm not gonna be happy with that.
I, I, I.
I can go along with anything, I've been here a long time, I can work with anybody.
Oh, I can't tell you.
The county hands of the whole of the courthouse employees, they're gonna be, everybody's gonna be grateful. Now, what you're trying to do is a good thing, I think, if you vote this in, right, you vote it in, and then it's up to y'all to some point. Bump them up. Is that what you're trying to do?
No, we're not, we're, we're just.
Where do you bump up from?
I don't know.
Where's that money come from, Brooke?
It comes from our district, is what I'm trying to work on, Kevin.
I mean, the other employee comes from.
My employees, my budget comes straight out of the general fund, I know that.
The, the general fund.
And it's, it's tapped.
How much access do we have to general fund?
Well, actually, right now, you're already operating in a rears in your general fund, which means you're using money that had been accruing in previous years. Y'all have made some decisions to pay for some things and do some things inside of your general fund. When we created the budget, the budget was very slim. Now, with things that have gone up over time, we're operating in a rears. There is no money. When we're trying to look at salary increases inside the general fund, which covers the revenue commission, the maintenance at the courthouse, the probate judge's office, air office here, and the EMA office, there's not a new revenue source to be able to pull from. Even if you pass a pay scale, then you're gonna have to turn around and not be able to give that employee the opportunity to increase their pay as you've led them to believe that you might be able to, because financially, you can't do it. What I would like to do is to be able to provide y'all with information at the next work session that tells you exactly how much your benefit plan is, something that y'all can review, determine if they want more money to go home with, to put food on the table. Y'all are gonna have to adjust some things, because right now, your benefit package is at fifty-four percent of somebody's hourly rate. So you're paying right at, say, for a ten dollar person, the county's paying fifteen dollars. But as employees, they might not understand that or know that. I would say we probably have one of the higher benefit packages as far as counties go, than the state of Alabama.
In other words, now, sixteen dollar a, an hour person, just like the rest of us, in actuality, what is that then, with, with the benefit package, what is he making?
One point five, you would add eight back to the sixteen, you'd add eight back to sixteen, so we'd be right at twenty-four dollars an hour.
So in other words, we're paying twenty-four dollars an hour for labor?
Yes.
That's it, that's it.
We all are.
The hands, the two hands that I've got working that's full-time, one, one, uh, one hand works, uh, more than that, and he, he's getting foreman's pay. But the other two still.
How much is that?
Foreman's pay is, I believe it's. Seventeen fifty-one or seventeen forty-nine.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven dollar an hour for.
And he's running, and he's running, working two districts like I am. But the other two's making fifteen eighty-six, where y'all's is making. And this, this is the reason that I brought this pay scale up and tried to get all this changed, because I asked for, uh, for the, the opportunity to give a rate. If I needed to, and they said, well, this is old pay scale. Well, the question is, where is old pay scale? When I checked in, it was, everybody's pay was different. I heard top out pay was that I operated was fifteen eighty-six, well, I find out later, y'all paying sixteen oh one. Where's the paper that shows that that's legal, and it's not legal for me to give everyone who I wanna raise? All I want to do is make control my district, if I have the funds, and that's what I tell Kevin on his, and I understand what Kevin said, and I know, and that's like Mike, the two-way. If I've got the money in my district, and I get the funds, and I do that, I should be able to set, to evaluate my people to what they should make, same way as Kevin should his. But if Kevin can work out a pay scale through the budget that he's getting, getting, and, you know, I know what you're saying, you're loaded up. But you did say that you was trying to work with something like that, am I right, Kevin?
Yeah, I am.
And if he can do that, I don't think that I've got the know-how and whatever that I can tell him how he needs to do his. And I don't think he knows my hands well enough to know their job performance. But it still comes back to Kevin. If Kevin comes in and says, I can give my deputies this raise on my budget, and he presents it, I'm going, probably ninety-nine percent of the time, because he knows his hands.
You're wanting the final say on what you do for your men, but you're gonna have the final say on what he does, isn't it?
The problem I have right now, over the years, Keith, I don't have the extra money in my budget.
Right, right.
So you're gonna have to out, outtake me more money, which we don't have.
We don't have, and we're, we're gonna try to build a jail, and we've got to work together. We're gonna have to have more hands to work into jail. I mean, we, we've got to come up with money somewhere, somehow.
Well, that's like, once again, this is gonna come to, evidently, somebody's gonna make a motion to.
I've got, I've, I've got some questions I don't think can be answered today. Okay, I'll make a motion, we table this to workshop, find some answers.
I got a motion to table this, I have a second.
I'll say it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is it, is it, you're aye? Oh, three, two, I'll, I'll have it, to table this, uh, district pay scale. Let's see, uh, District Two shop.
Kenneth is, uh, looking at purchasing his shop for his, um, a building for his, uh, his shop, and we need to, to vote on allowing him to, to do so. I think he's worked out an agreement with the property owner, is it six acres?
Six point three.
Acres, uh, got the building, um, for, what's the?
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand dollars, and, uh, we need to vote to allow him to do that. It's, uh, technically in District One, uh, as far as right across the street, and we'll need to, um, move that into District Two.
Have you got the legal description for that?
I do, yes.
But you are gonna get moved into, to your district, yeah, that's, I need the legal description before I do anything. I was gonna say, I'm just asking, but it needs to be put in his district before.
We could go ahead and, and do it.
How, how can you do this? I mean, does it have to be done? Do you have to put it in their district?
We, we can, we, we need to enter in the deal to allow him to, to proceed with the purchase of that, and then we can make the, the most of the due, what needs to be done to move it into his, his district. It's, it's legal to move it into his district, it's adjoining his district, it's quite frankly right across the street. And there's no population, uh, that will be affected by, by, nor will it causing a strange configuration at the district.
I don't have a problem, only we're not getting a cart in front of the horse.
Right.
That's, that's your legal standpoint.
Yeah, we, we have to leave a description, we just need to allow him to, to.
Okay, so we need a motion for him to, to proceed with the, uh, person of the.
That's right.
Six point three acres in District One, which will be, so, have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
We got a motion, say it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have that. Uh, jail update, uh, Scott, you, how was an update, or?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, I've been speaking with our architect in the last couple of weeks. We have, uh, the base feasibility report, uh, we're working on a planning report, and Mr. Jones and members of his staff are coming up Thursday at nine-thirty, uh, ten o'clock, uh, to meet with the sheriff at the sheriff's office in us jails, and whomever would like to, to join to go through the next, next level.
Thirty and nine o'clock?
Nine thirty.
Thirty.
Where at? At the jail?
At the jail, yeah, sheriff's office.
We'll wait in the ELC office, there'll be plenty of room there.
Okay.
Nine thirty, yeah.
Nine thirty.
Okay. I have a, uh, is it all cut?
Yes, sir.
I have a resolution here concerning Highway Seventy-Nine, right by the side of the, uh, schoolhouse in Bear Creek, there's a request to restrict the traffic, only be on this, Scott, or you, uh, only, in other words, what, what trucks are prohibited now? Tandems and trailers?
Yes, sir, a few, a few years ago, um, and this was before this current, uh, commission took, took office, but there were some concerns expressed by Norfolk, Norfolk Southern, uh, about the railroad crossing there at Bear Creek near the school. Basically, what happened is big trucks get stuck on the railroad, it's a very difficult incline and decline. And so we had, uh, a couple of public hearings, one at the county commission office, and one at the Bear Creek Town Hall concerning, uh, this and the request of Norfolk Southern to close that, that road. Well, the people of Bear Creek, they think we're fairly united and not wanting that road closed. It's a direct route, uh, by the school and on into, uh, the, the lakes and, and the campgrounds and those areas. Uh, so, the commission voted to, uh, restrict access to that.
Is that a panel meeting we went to up there?
Yes, sir.
Concerning it?
And, um, uh, we voted to do that, but apparently, no resolution was signed on it, uh, and sheriff needs that to be able to enforce it. The, uh, police department in Bear Creek needs it, needs it to enforce it. So we just need to re-adopt that resolution.
So Bear Creek didn't agree with this, and also the big commission up there?
Yeah, they, they definitely did not want it closed. And, and as far as I, I, I'm aware, as far as like your regular passenger vehicles, the crossing is not an issue. It's just when you get into your larger trucks and.
What it is, is when you cross the tracks, when the tracks and highway, if anybody don't know, it's just real steep, and dollys on the trucks, and anything very long's gonna get hung up right there.
And a trailer or something like.
I've seen, over the years, I've seen, I've watched the train run through two tractor trailers, that's, dollys get hung up there.
Well, at, at one time, they tried to reroute it down, we were also in front school, or it did reroute it.
It did reroute it.
But, but still, the trucks don't need to be down there.
Yeah.
So let me clarify this, uh, in order for law enforcement to enforce any kind of traffic violations or citations or ride, this has to be in place?
Yes, sir.
Before we can do it.
Yes, sir, I think we have a sign.
Yeah, and the signs have to be in place as well.
I think the signs is there, aren't they?
Yeah, should be.
Okay, so, Tim, you'd like to make this motion, or why you?
Yeah, Dale Kenton, he is.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
That's what they do. We got a motion, say it, uh, restricting this road to certain traffic, which will be, uh, prescribed accordingly about signs. Uh, your motion, we accept it, do this, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise, I have it. That's all I see, then, but, is there, Scott, you have anything, uh? Scott, you have anything?
No, you're.
Is that your motion, please, Jerry?
I'll make a motion.
Say it, all in favor say aye.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash Forty-Nine County News TV.